Contacted me earlier and she is under the weather and told her I was glad for her to keep that to herself, so she will not be joining us this evening. But I think she's going to try and follow on Facebook. And for those of you who aren't aware, we do have Facebook Live going. The camera will be affixed on us and will not have the screen, so people watching at home won't be, won't have the benefit of your slideshow. The purpose this evening is to have our two developers who have expressed an interest in our Spotswood property essentially to audition. This is part of the process for city council selecting a developer to partner with to develop this property. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, our governor Yonkin and the legislature changed things up and we are now mask optional, so feel free to wear a mask. But for the presenters would ask if you could unmask if you are and so we can be sure to hear you as we have this dialogue. This is a work session. We won't be taking any action. Our ambition is to be able to ask questions and learn why we should choose the developer, either Echelon or the Lexington Collaborative as we move forward. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for any comments or questions.
Mr. Mayor, no comments or questions at this point in time. I believe Mr. Gaskin has indicated he'd make the first presentation and the Spotswood Collaborative has a spokesperson or people that will then proceed after that. And then open up the questions from any council member. And we do have just a couple from the community that also came in that I will, once council's finished or some break, I'll go ahead and ask those questions of the developers as well.
Do members of council have any questions or thoughts as we begin? As you do, of course, this is our time, an opportunity to interact freely with the folks in a non-formal or an informal time. And the questions that the citizens put forward have been forwarded to the developers. If they don't address those specifically, Jim will be asking the specific questions. With that, I invite Edwin Gaskins to our podium. And if you can press the button that makes the microphone red.
You're asking a lot of my questions.
Perfect. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Edwin Gaskin, a principal with Echelon Resources. I'm grateful for your time tonight. Before I get started, I'm also, frankly, pleased that you have a tough decision ahead of you from all I can tell. You know, the competition is, has a quality concept, has a quality background. I know it's difficult when you have two good proposals in front of you. It's easier to have a good and bad decision, not necessarily a good and better, those are often harder. But for my part, I have no rocks to throw. I'm looking forward to hearing their presentation. So, you know, what we do, we're known all around the state and in North Carolina now for infill sites, something that is something that could be something of a higher and better use, both historic rehab and new construction. We are niche developers, niche developers, however you want to pronounce it. And we focus really on the catalytic effect of how those developments serve in the community. We are owner-developer operators, meaning that this face, however good or bad you might view it, is here for the long term in terms of this development, should you choose us. Why we do what we do, everybody gets to choose what they do in the morning. We get a lot of, I don't know, quality self-actualization, if you want to go that route, in terms of taking a site that has maybe fallen into obscurity or deterioration and giving it renewed relevance. That's important to us. We love the idea of creating high-quality spaces. We have won plenty of awards, but what it's nice to me personally is when I go by those developments soon after we're done or a year or two later and actually see other things that are happening around it, sort of that ripple effect. That's very fulfilling for us. Where we are, so I put together this map the other day, and this is what we've done over the last couple of years. And you can see we're very widespread. We're based out of Richmond, but we've been all over Virginia and in North Carolina. The purple stars are completed projects. The red ones are those that are in a process towards development. And I don't bring this up to brag. I bring this up to show you how many miles we put on our vehicles and the fact that we've gotten to love podcasts and Spotify and Pandora. But, and this will lend itself to the next slide, but there's a, there's a, there's a real specialized skill in terms of management of properties. We aren't merchant developers. We don't pop into something, develop it for a fee and leave. Like I said, we're owner-developers, and so we've had to come up with a diverse toolbox in terms of property management. We believe that though construction is a vital part of it, we're really in the leasing business. We're really in the property management business. And so how we manage properties is not only important, it's of paramount importance. Construction is a subset of getting to that goal, but really it's about that goal. That goal being happy tenants, quality development, a well-managed property. We rarely sell. We are long-term owners, and so we invest in both the construction, in the maintenance and the maintenance to a higher level than what a merchant developer or a fee developer would typically do. So, how do we do, how do we do what we do? Well, we believe there's four critical elements to that. One is the capital sources. Just as diverse as those purple stars were, that's as diverse as the capital sources are. We use a lot of long-term relationships, banks that you've heard of, banks that you haven't, credit unions. We've even used private equity before. In all instances, we have significant personal capital at risk. We have skin in the game, as it were. We're very vested financially. We actually try to keep this simple. A lot of our money comes from family, and if we're feeling like the couch cushions aren't producing what they need to in that respect, we go to friends, close friends, that we want to remain friends, but we try to keep it simple. Design. We have a great design team, and we bring in specialists as we diversify the asset types that we work on. There's a right tool for every task. We use market study data to sort of drive the design and adjust it, and we are directly involved. My architects will tell you, I will flip around a toilet or relocate a coat closet or what have you 10 different times until it feels right. Construction. We would prefer to do third-party general contractors, arms-length, but we have self-performed. We are licensed Class A G C. It's not my favorite side of the development cycle, but we do it where we can't find the quality team that we would want for a project. So we were able to fill that niche somewhat reluctantly when we can't find the general contractor base or the subcontractor and supplier base that we need to execute on that plan. We are a direct supplier for many trades, Trane, Ferguson, Mayer, Lot, Square D. We have direct vendor accounts, so when subcontractors may not be producing for us, we'll often go directly and buy our own supplies, particularly this last 18 months that has saved our bacon, proverbially speaking, to be able to step into the logistical mess and demand our product to be there on time. And that's the way we've executed projects during COVID. Operations, like I said before, it's really all about the property management. We will, our preference is to work with a third-party property management firm, but often that talent base may not exist in the markets that we're in. We, in some of those purple stars that you saw, we self-manage. We have a lot of cloud-based and remote tools, and coupled with an effective field team that we continually train, we achieve the right tool for that particular task. So I've surveyed two properties today, and I have four properties to view tomorrow. As an owner, I'm directly involved, a secret shopper, so to speak, and a scheduled shopper to evaluate with my property managers, and I'm on the phone with them pretty much. I would say a third of my week is spent sort of executive involvement in field property management. I probably have far too many conversations about ill-located dog poo than anybody that's a professional would want. But really, that's what happens when you get involved with your own portfolio management. So that's about us. Happy to answer any questions. The site, we all know it, 2.365 acres, you know, post-subdivision. Our goal here is 62 units of new construction multifamily, stick-built, surface parked. We believe we have a strong 1.5 space parking ratio. We believe on the data of what we manage, that's actually not only adequate, but trending towards the generous side. We see this as one- and two-bedroom units, targeting area professionals and retirees. You see what we've offered for the property? So we think the site is obviously well-positioned, underutilized. It's got some complications with the utility context. This is a three-story with a basement level, taking advantage of the lower terrain, fronting Spotswood. So upscale, 70%, 30% split on the ones and twos, that's our current design. You can see up there the projected rents. We have felt, long before the Danter study came out, that Lexington had a housing opportunity. You know, any community needs to have a well-developed housing spectrum. You know, people go through various stages in their life and change the places where they put their head down to sleep at night. When a community gets too specialized, say in student housing or even retiree housing or what have you, or maybe heavy on the rental housing, those things get distorted and people find reasons then not to live in your community. Really, we believe that this product that we're proposing fills a certain need that's not being successfully met, and we don't hope to completely slate that need with 62 units, but we do believe the site and the product are the right combination to be successful there. We don't think we'll be in also ran in terms of product type. I've shared this slide before in the Zoom community engagement sessions last year. What do we like about it? What's not to like? It's well-connected, work and play, downtown Lexington, we all know and love it. What are we going to do with the housing product? Why does it matter? We believe housing is a key to sustainable growth. In fact, to our pleasure and amusement, it was nice to see that the Virginia Economic Development Partnership jumped on this train about a year or so ago with their new initiatives, something that we have literally been talking about for 15 to 20 years, that in, particularly in smaller communities, having a quality housing stock allows you to have a better narrative in order to recruit employers and help existing businesses expand and thus being retained in your community. Style and appeal, maintenance-free loft-style residences. So our concept plan, I believe this has been shared before, we've tried to go through with city staff, sort of zoning parameters and setbacks. Based on the community engagement sessions last year, we've reduced the scale. Of course, we've reduced the unit count from 150 to 62. We've made sure that the parking ratio works at 1.5. We've moved the massing away from the Houston Street neighbors. You know, obviously, the P. O'Vanna Building is there, being worked on. It's been subdivided. The primary interest there is as it exists currently in terms of the curb cut. So as disruptive as any development there will be, this is intended to minimize that disruption in terms of cohesiveness with what's next to it and behind it, but also in the transition to the Houston Street neighbors. Obviously, having the greenfield there is appealing to a lot of people. Any change there is scary, but we've tried to really think through the feedback that we heard and, of course, the feedback from the city team, and we think this checks those boxes, in our opinion. These are just facade scale possibilities. These aren't really kind of Lexington, but this is what the architect provided for us. Obviously, this all gets negotiated with the city in terms of facade types and scale. Here's a three-story type of brick front. Again, I don't know how relevant they will be to the final design, but that gives you a sort of a sense of scale, looking at it, not including that basement level along Spotswood. Again, none of that is defining or obligatory. Those are just ideas to get a sense as to how this will look comparative to a car, for example. Landscaping concepts, we've already started to kind of put together a package for that. Again, this is something that we'll work with city staff on. I know you have extensive materials for landscaping. Those are things that we love to dive into and incorporate, sort of a ready-made formula for success there. But we're already talking about concepts of how to soften that site, how to beautify it. We're not trying to hide the quality product that we developed. The landscaping should enhance it. Net fiscal benefit, again, this was done with city staff. This is your guys' spreadsheet. We did a couple of iterative corrections. This is where we think we'll land with the 62-unit complex over this period of time. We think that's a substantial benefit to the city. And again, it's, you know, not producing taxes now. There's a limited envelope of its development potential. It's yours to judge whether or not that's sufficient. In terms of schedule, right now, the purchase agreement that we have in draft form, obviously, these are generous time periods, 12-month study period, closing within 30 days of the expiration, and then 12 months to start construction and 24 months to finish. So in theory, we could be talking about upwards of, if the purchase contract were signed today, four years and one month before it opened. But those are legal documents, so obviously you have to build in buffers for things like global pandemics and other, you know, black swan events to occur. I can't think of a purchase contract where we haven't dramatically overperformed on in terms of timelines. We have no interest in sitting on a site and just letting it sit there. That does nothing for any of us. We want to get going and get rolling on it. Zoning, again, a lot of extensive discussions with city staff. We plan to pursue a conditional use permit. We believe the RLC zoning allows for the development with that CUP. We believe that the 62-unit count will not require an exception to that density under this proposed zoning approach. We may get corrected on that during the process, but that is our current plan. And as I talked about before, you know, what we did last year, earlier last year, I think that was helpful, a little painful, but helpful. We've made a lot of adjustments. We've reduced the unit count down from 150 to 62. We lowered the building height. We have a parking ratio now that we believe exceeds the zoning requirements. We moved the massing further away from Houston, and we've actually increased the buffers to exceed in zoning requirements. So it's never going to be perfect for everybody, but we've tried to listen and be responsive. Obviously, it's a dramatically smaller project than what we were originally anticipating, but we're still excited. We love Lexington. We've loved Lexington for a long time. We wanted to find a way to sort of shine here and show a product that's really exceptional, and we hope, we hope we're selected. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Edwin. Members of council have any questions from that presentation?
And I can go through this list if you like.
Dave.
So is now when we would, Echelon is on?
Okay. I would say yes. I would say questions specific to Echelon, not on the potential proposal or the buildings or layout. We're not looking at the site, but questions that would be more specific to partnering.
Okay.
And Mr. Sigler, don't feel pressured to get it all in right now. I'm going to stay for the second presentation. I'm sure we'll all be available as thoughts and questions occur to us.
Just, just one that I actually asked you when I came in, just because people have been following this for maybe a year or so. I asked if Urban Corps would still be a partner because they did participate in some of the early Zooms and presentations. And if you would just share that answer that you gave to me, others might find it.
Sure. With the reduction of 150 units to 62, it doesn't feel like the right fit with Urban Corps anymore. We believe this is within our wheelhouse to either perform on or find a partner that's more synced up with this project scale. Urban Corps is a wonderful group, very busy, and are focused on sort of a unit count project and a story height project that sort of fits their current profile. So again, with three stories and a basement level and the reduction of 62 units, there are far more opportunities to partner to deliver this.
Ms. Tralega.
The question I have has to do with the development schedule. You had mentioned four years and a month.
That sounds very, very long.
Possibly before it's 100% in there. When will, in that schedule, the occupancy begin?
Sure. Well, if we were to take it to the extreme of the legal parameters of the current draft of the purchase agreement, it could be that long out. But the reality is that between last year and this year, we have done a fair number of due diligence activities already, like vetting the zoning, charting that course forward. So we believe things like the 12-month due diligence period should be reduced by maybe three-quarters of that or maybe even half. The ramp up to construction is probably going to be reduced by half, and the construction itself should take about a year to 16 months. So I think all in all, it's hard to commit outside of the legal framework that we have to have generously applied in the document, but I would think this is probably a two-and-a-half to, or two to two-and-a-half year from this point, from signing the purchase contract to folks moving in. I hope that helps.
Mr. Gaskin, a question about the actual property management after the project's completed. There have been some questions, I guess, from the public about like what that would look like. Would there be a property manager on site? Would it be managed by a local company? I mean, I mean, how would that work?
So we feel like a project of this unit count and of quality requires a full-time property manager dedicated to the site. So that doesn't mean that they're living there, but they have an office there, they're available to the, to the tenants and their guests as needed. Not quite a concierge service, as you would see at a hotel, but a very involved presence. It's on the cusp as to whether or not you would need, in terms of unit count, a full-time maintenance person, or you would have a rolodex of subcontractors that this property manager would call for various services as they come up. But there would be a key point person that was basically dedicated full-time to this. And to answer your other question about third-party property managers, we've used, we use them quite successfully across our portfolio. But honestly, that's not our preference from the outset, and there's two reasons why. Typically, this property management is a hard business, and typically, to be successful, those folks require, you know, a portfolio of hundreds, maybe thousands of units to manage. As would be the case with any third-party contractor, they're never going to care as much as we do about what we just built. So particularly during the first leasing cycle or two, we are directly involved in some of the projects that we've done recently. I have literally reviewed and approved every single application myself because it's very important to make sure that first year or two of lease-up is the right mix of tenants, if you will. So we're probably over-involved from a principal standpoint, and we execute that best with the more flexible property management model that we've adopted in the past, where we have effectively a direct report key person that's there on site, and we are working with them on a scheduled weekly call and then multiple non-scheduled interactions throughout the week to, you know, vet applicants, address problems, troubleshoot things that need to be handled under warranty or some sort of corrective constructive issue, construction issue. We're sort of unapologetic control freaks in that regard. That's how our properties thrive.
And one follow-up question. I know we can't get into the weeds about design and whatnot on these projects, but based on your prior projects of this size and scope, I mean, what are the typical amenities that one would expect roughly for?
Let me see here. We're low on the unit count side to, I'll go back to that concept. I think in the reduction from the 150 to 62, we drop below the threshold of, say, like a pool. So that's been called. But we typically have a very generous clubroom event space that's both for people to hang out in and also available for private rentals. We find that a lot of our tenants are relocating from other areas or maybe temporarily here for assignment, and so sometimes they have folks come in town. So sometimes you offer like a guest suite. Often have a business center and a small coworking facility. A lot of folks are working remotely and from home. Certainly, these last two years have taught us that, that barking dog or crying child sometimes disrupts the mojo of that Zoom call or whatever it is. So we often have sort of micro office suites that are sort of à la carte available to tenants where they can, you know, basically plug back into their internet connection and have that micro office environment that's still on site. They can still be wearing their pajama pants, but, you know, they can look more professional in a professional environment. We also have a fitness facility that we invest heavily in. Again, it's not going to replace sort of the Gold's Gym or the, or the Bollies or what have you, but it's, it's usually enough to take the edge off of those 4:00 AM runners, you know, in the winter and the people that want to do some light barbell work. So that's what we focus on, and, you know, I'm thinking of our Suffolk property, Peanut Crossing, Phase 1, 58 units. We have a very generous fitness center there. And I'm always pleased when I go there, when I see people just coming in and using it, going out. It's all access-controlled, TVs up. Again, if you're a hardcore workout person, you're probably subscribed to a CrossFit facility somewhere, but this usually satisfies most folks. Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing, we tend to be very pet-friendly as well. So that's been something that's been a hallmark of a lot of our products. Usually be like an onsite dog run and that kind of facility. But that's something that's, I don't know, just been a wonderful thing to see when, particularly when you're working with the type of renters that we work with. Sorry.
David.
Do you typically utilize the option of short-term rentals in the buildings that you own and manage? Kind of the rentals less than 30 days where you advertise it on Airbnb or VRBO or something like that?
I would say that is generally the exception rather than the rule. Administratively, those become, that's a lot harder to manage, both in terms of turnover and frankly, sort of the tent quality tenant experience for the other tenants. I would say, if I had to put a figure on it, it's less than 1% that we ever dabble in that. Obviously, our preference is for a stable tenant base. So 12-month leases are the norms, are the norm, and, you know, typically we see tenants staying with us for multiple years as they're doing some transitional period in their life, be it a work assignment or what have you. Now, that being said, we do offer sort of, as a matter of course, six-month leases at a premium. Occasionally, when we are partnering with a hospital, we'll entertain like three-month leases, because a lot of traveling nurses and physicians will be more in a three-month cycle. Again, that's starting to get into an area of discomfort for us, but depending on our relationship with the area employer base, we've made those adjustments before. I know we did that in Halifax with the local Centerra Hospital. But traditionally, our go-to is 12 months. I would say probably less than 5% of our leases are six months, and then less than one or below that.
And then, again, you know, I don't want to totally get into the weeds, but the leases that you enter into with, with your tenants, do you allow them, when they're not present, to put their unit, you know, sublet it on Airbnb?
We do not. We prohibit subletting or assignment without landlord consent, and as the landlord, I don't really consent. But it is, we want to know, I mean, we go through a rigorous, we invest in tenant screening. We want quality tenants. And, you know, obviously, conforming with all applicable laws, and there are many, you know, we run criminal background, credit backgrounds, all the databases that are available to make tenant screening decisions. And that's not only for the tenant of record, but any adult occupant. So we do limit, you know, occupancy per federal guidelines, which are very generous. They're, they're two per bedroom plus one is the HUD guideline for housing. So that can mean that a potential, you know, two-bedroom apartment could have conceivably five people in it. Now, that's across, that's not just our stuff, that's really any apartment in the United States. That's a Housing Urban Development guideline. So, you know, to counter that risk of, I guess, over occupancy, you know, obviously we're investing in sort of a tenant profile that's more professional in nature, that doesn't want to live with four other people, you know, that wants to have their space and maybe a companion of some kind. But whether they're on the lease or the companion's on the lease, we make sure every adult occupant over 18 goes through that same screening process. And frankly, as owner-developers with our capital at risk, we have made strategic decisions to really slow down leasing. We would rather have vacancy than have poor tenants, or poor quality tenants, rather. Let me make sure I say that right. Poor quality tenants. That was a terrible mistake I just said. So, poor quality tenants.
And then, do your tenants, do they pay each of their own bills, or are any of the bills included in the rent? And I think of internet, water, and so on.
We haven't finalized that for this product yet, but what we have traditionally done in other markets pretty consistently is we include water, sewer, trash, and high-speed internet. It's a community connection, so some folks with specialized speed or security needs for work tend to subscribe. We build in the wiring so that they can subscribe separately if they so choose. But generally, I would say for 98% of our tenants, they love our internet service. Sometimes we have to, we invest in switches and quality of service protocols, so if there is some gamer that's chewing up all the bandwidth, we throttle them back. So, you know, we probably deal with So, you know, we probably deal with, multiple times a year, people doing illegal downloads. We have to deal with them in terms of warnings and potential legal action. You know, there's, there's a lot to be had in terms of being in the weeds of successful property management, particularly in today's day and age.
Leslie?
As a developer-operator, how many or what percentage of your apartment buildings have you sold?
We have none to, to date that I am the majority owner, and I'm not trying to dance around it, I'm trying to be accurate. We have one pending under contract right now. So in 18 years where I am the majority owner, I have not sold any properties to date, but one is pending.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as the apartments go, what accommodations do you have for accessibility in apartments?
Great question. So, you know, obviously, the building code require, and the ADA laws require, I believe it's, oh, I'm going to get this wrong, one per 50 or two per 50. So the architects will have to tell me here, but it's either two or three units that would be ADA accessible. And depending on the building type, there's a type A and type B. Again, building code-driven, architect-driven, so it hasn't been designed yet, but that's the bare minimum. Beyond that, not just for ADA accessibility, but for general ease of use, we tend to make corridors on the wider side. We tend to invest in more handrails. We tend to do things that lend itself to less property damage long-term, corner guards that are stylish-looking but also can take a beating. You know, just things that make good sense for everybody, but also complying with the applicable laws. So.
Thank you. And I'll give you the opportunity to brag. What awards have you won?
So I was reviewing this the other day for an RFP we're responding to, but one of my very first projects, the Barry Burke Building in Richmond, which is right across the street from the Carpenter Center. When we did that, if you're familiar with Richmond, now you have the Performing Arts Center, you have the Mill and Rhodes Hotel, you have, blanking on the hotel, the John Marshall that's been redeveloped. When we did that project, we were literally the only project going. There was a large homeless population, first, one of the first time, first big projects I had done. I'm literally negotiating with these very nice people in unfortunate circumstances to find them better housing other than the vestibule of this building. The Alliance to Conservold Richmond Neighborhoods awarded us that year the Golden Hammer Award, which is their best award for, I guess, sort of pioneering renovation. And since then, obviously, there were a lot of other factors, but we're proud to have been a small catalytic part in that area just transforming. And if you went there today, there's nightlife, there's bars, there's restaurants. Also in Hopewell, when we, when we renovated the James Maloney High School, the Historic Hopewell Foundation loved that project. And a grand hotel in a, you know, an economically challenged community at the time, and still in part today, in a lower-income area, we took a big risk taking on this giant school and putting in these units, which still look magnificent today. It was a, you know, typically, when you talk about historic tax credits, you're talking about a building. But here, the National Park Service actually wanted us not only to conserve the grand circular entrance in front of the school, but also the live oaks that surround that drive. So like if something was diseased, we had to hire like a very specialist arborist to come in and help us. So it's those kind of details that complicate the projects, but also give it personality and flavor. So we're proud of those types of awards that, awards that we get.
Right. And since this will be a partnership with the city, how much input will the city have in the facade design and, and things like that? How do you see that progress?
Well, I see that right now as a, as a blank page. Again, that's the beauty of having a new construction format. Frankly, I'm looking forward to, to this versus the vagaries and challenges of historic rehab where you don't know what's behind that wall and you're stuck with this thing and you've got to do this. This is a blank page, and it's exciting. So we together can sort of pick what that facade may look like. And it's, it's exciting to think of those possibilities. There's far more qualified consultants on our team that will be engaged in that, but I'll have my opinions too. But we want to work with the city team to figure out the right solution that makes a statement, establishes a brand, but also is congruent with the neighborhood.
Mr. Smith?
I'm glad Leslie brought up the, the subject of, of a property sale. My concern is I'm, get a lot of feedback and from, from the folks who live here about the, the expectations of, of rents aren't realistic. And, you know, they do their studies and you've done yours. And my, I guess my question or concern is if, when, if we get down the road and as we've seen the volatility in our current market, five years ago, our rental inventory was pretty high and now it's down to close to zero. Of course, that drives our rental prices up, but the, in another five years, that could do, you know, another 180, and we're, we're now we're stuck with a whole lot of, of inventory. And you've based a lot of your expectations, projections to reach a certain level. And if we get down the road and mutually understand that it looks like we're not going to get there, we're not going to meet that, that threshold of, of expectation, what have you in the past had to adjust your progress as we're getting to the finish line to meet the market demands as, as they change?
That's a great question. And certainly, over the last several years, we've seen volatility in the marketplace, as you said. We typically don't float down our rents because obviously, they're important to the financial and underpinnings, but they're also important to sort of the trajectory and your tenant profile, if you will. If there's a dramatic event, like we had in '08, '09, obviously, those strategic decisions need to be made. But in the normal ups and downs of the real estate cycle, and real estate does go up and down, even though the last couple of years has been pretty much the up, the short answer to your question is principal guarantees. And you're looking at it, and one or two others. So as we've had projects that have endured tougher times, we have come out of pocket to effectively subsidize the performa to continue with the rents that we're cultivating to achieve that ideal tenant mix, but also keep the capital sources happy. You know, I've had a diverse array of projects and investments over the years. Some have made a lot of money, some have made okay amounts, some have just sort of dog paddled along. You wish all of them are home runs, but we're very proud of the product that we produce. And even the ones that just sort of dog paddled along financially, you know, where we've had to sort of come in as sponsor guarantors and make sure the bills are paid and, and everything happens, we've done that because that's part of the risk we bear as owner-developers. One of the things that makes me nervous with the prospect of a volatile market is where you see, as I've talked about, merchant developers that come in to develop a product and leave, and leave the risk bag being held by somebody else. But also, you know, an easy door to walk through with this would be, well, let's flip the switch and go to condo. Nothing wrong with that. Ownership at a concept is a great thing to have, but in the white-hot residential market we're seeing everywhere, and particularly Lexington, if this thing were to flip to condo, my worry would be that investors would come in and snap them up and then turn around and rent them. So you'd be almost in the same situation as us, except for the lack of professional and cohesive property management. And you'd also have some people that were extremely angry because they bought there to live there. Now they've realized that a third of the units or half of the units are, have been purchased by investors that are now renting them, you know, come what may. So that's almost the worst possible combination, in my opinion, particularly in today's white-hot market. You do see a lot of properties being swooped up by investment firms. That's incredibly distorting the housing market that we see today at a macro level. But I think at a micro level, there is a, a risk here of that happening because Lexington is so popular. It is so attractive, and there are so few, I guess, entry points for what could be a plausible rental scenario for that one-off or two-off rental owner. We did consider this as a straight-to-condo product, but we just felt like we could invest in a better package, better materials, if frankly, we ate our own cooking long-term and had to rent it as a professionally managed building. We think that's the better outcome for the community and for us long-term. That was a very long-winded answer. I apologize. I hope I, if I didn't answer some of your questions, please repeat them.
No, I think it was a, it was a broad brush, and there was a lot of air to fill, and I think you've satisfied my curiosity. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I've taken up a lot of your time. Can I just share this sort of interesting story I heard? 1859, there was this tightrope walker that decided to, this is a true story, to tightrope across Niagara Falls, Horseshoe Falls, from the US to the Canadian side. And big spectacle, there was 10,000 people on either side. 1859 is pre-Lincoln, they weave their own rope, a great story. So this guy does it, he goes, if you know the geography, actually walks downhill, right, to the US and the Canadian side. He gets across, everybody goes wild, just amazing. And he's a theater performer, so he's like, you came here for a show, I'm going to go back. So he then walks uphill back to the US side. Again, this is a true story. Everybody goes wild, okay? So now he's got them all riled up, both sides of the national borders, and he says, okay, you came here for a show. He throws away his balancing stick, and he says, bring out a wheelbarrow. So this, you know, they bring out this wheelbarrow, this is a true story, and he asks the crowd, do you believe I can do this with a wheelbarrow? And they're all like, yes, he could do it, we just saw you go across twice. So they're all cheering him on, and then he asks, okay, I need one volunteer. And, and so, I actually don't know what happened after that, but, you know, he'd already, not for me, I don't even like getting on ladders, but he went across Niagara Falls twice. But I guess my point is, you have two quality proposals in front of you, and you could do far worse than either one of them. But honestly, what both of us are asking is to get in the wheelbarrow. Because what you're doing with this opportunity is lending your credibility and potentially approval to this. And whatever happens, be it two years or four years and one month, or however long it takes, your credibility and leadership capital is also with that tightrope walker. So you have a tough decision. I don't envy you. Again, if it was good, bad, it would be a lot easier, but I think we're both asking you to effectively be in the wheelbarrow. So.
Very good. Another question, or?
Question.
Okay. Let's, if we can, we'll try and make this the last question for Ashalon.
Thanks for coming. The question that I have has to do with risk. You've been talking about the risk on your part in developing these things. You'd also mentioned about the process of screening tenants, and you've been doing this for some years now and whatnot. We had some hard times during the pandemic, and one of the hard issues in the pandemic was evictions and foreclosures. What experience have you had, I'm just curious, with that question?
Well, during the pandemic, there was kind of a bifurcation of the housing market, and, and we focused on sort of upscale rentals, and largely, us and thankfully, many of our peers were largely untouched. There was tragic economic happenings happening with sort of the lower-income side of the housing market, and, you know, thankfully, that's not our specialty, but most of that enforcement eviction was sort of happening in those kind of product portfolios. Now, that being said, I would say what we call enforcement, you know, going through the process leading to eviction is very rare for us. Across our direct-managed portfolio, which is several hundred units, I would say that we are standing in front of a judge across all of that portfolio maybe once a year, maybe even less. A lot of it gets worked out with warning letters, with payment plans. What we did during the pandemic and continue to do is if a tenant is communicating with us, we'll work with them. We'll find a way for them to stay in their home because we ask them to treat it like a home. It's more than an apartment, it's where they live. There's psychological value to that, there's their employment, you know, ramifications for that. We want them to be a happy tenant, and sometimes that means we need to be flexible. It also flips the other way. A lot of people relocated with the pandemic. New jobs, nurses from one college, from one, one hospital went to another state. In all of those cases, we worked out an exit plan with our tenants. Of course, we have leases, there are legal documents, but we're not so rigid to make it the worst decision a tenant ever made. We try to find a workable solution with the wonderful humans that we work with in our buildings. It's very rare that we have to pull out that legal document and enforce it in a legal sense. I would say it's probably in that less than 1% sort of ratio on any given month or year. And we've been very blessed in that regard. I know other apartment communities have had to struggle with that a lot more, but I think that's a function of design, the product type, and also the tenant screening that we do. And the fact that we overtly say, you know, we're, we, we work with area professionals, we expect you to be employed, and if that employment changes, as it does with successful employees, we're going to work with you. It's not a prison. It's a, we want it to be a great memory as you exit from us. Hope that helps.
Edwin, thank you for your presentation and entertaining the questions.
Thank you.
While you step down and before the collaborative steps up, let's take a three-minute break and as we get the technology squared away, and a bathroom break if anybody needs it. We will begin in three minutes.
Thank you all for a brief interlude there. Do we have our technology all in good shape? And Lee Merrill, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel, for advancing this project closer and closer every year. And it's been an interesting road to see how long it's taken, and things have been scaled down. The Ra-Ra Building was conserved, and we look forward to helping you understand why we think this is a, this is also a beneficial plan. I want to say from the outset that I think I'm in agreement with almost everything Mr. Gaskin said about certain things, and you will have the opportunity to make a decision between a condominium project that will in fact have a fair amount of rental in it, we know that that's the market, but as opposed to trusting on one singular entity to be involved with the destiny of 62 houses or 62 homes, this design that we're giving you the choice to consider. Here we go. Can you hear me all right? Okay. We did submit today, and you have in front of you, an update on our, our progress on the design. Our mission has stayed the same, which is to plan, organize, and execute a discreet development project to be the sustainable benefit of the whole community, as well as the financial interests of both the city and the development team. How do I, left or right? What's the advance command on this controller? Or is it this one?
There we go.
Which one?
This, this forward, but I guess you got to point it directly into the TV.
I know that you would like to know about the team. I think we're all here. The membership has these assigned roles. This is a collaborative synergistic group that meets as frequently as necessary to advance our goals. If we were lucky enough to be awarded the prospect of going ahead, we have 12 months to do the due diligence. The project, you've seen the plan, it's virtually unchanged, it's just that we think we can squeeze in a few more one-bedroom units and raise from the original submitted of 48 and get up to a count of 56 because of, the site plan does support one and a half cars per. The, I'm going to use the relevant local work so you get an idea of who, what the members are working. Max Ivanoff, Max Mark Holmes has basically been involved in the Donalds Project, the Wetherburn Project, projects all over town. Weatherburn Project, projects all over town, and is basically unattached, single-family residences, but the building construction is very, very similar. All right. Heidi Schweitzer is the principal architect, and Heidi has a broad experience in developing buildings here in town. She's an architect of record on the Dutch Inn remodels and renovations, the First National Bank condominium project on Main Street, and this is Pike's Place on Mill Creek Valley or the Turnpike Road in the southern part of the county. This is a 61 townhouses, I think it is, 67. So, and Heidi is also part of the ownership and development team there, has a lot of experience in that. I have done mostly custom houses around, maybe 100 around the county in my career here, but I also had the pleasure of working on the Plunkett Street duplexes back in the 90s for Bob Eschbach, now owned by Lois Lane, not Lois Lane, Lois Keane, and as a successful investment, well-maintained, and this is the second owner who's renting, renting these buildings. Arthur Bartonstein has a long corporate career, but since he's been in Lexington and established himself here, he's got as clients Kendall, VMI, Washington &amp; Lee, and the Horse Center, and is, is doing work successfully for all of those institutions. These are some of the projects that, back in the day when Arthur was out in the big world doing corporate work, much of which was housing, so he's fully experienced in that, in that area. Would like to just invite Arthur Bartonstein to give you an overview of the insights we had about the site and why we developed the plan, the plan that we did. Thank you, Arthur.
Let me see if this, yeah, this works. So I've got a pointer here. Good. Thank you. We are very interested, really passionate about quality of place, both respecting this place, this neighborhood, and, and making place. We understand this place, and that's why we're here. We, we know this in, in, in all its dimensions. At one time, the Spotswood site was the Lexington ferry ground, fairgrounds, excuse me, in the early part of the century. The cemetery is, is just behind the tents. So you've seen this, let's see. We're planning to even out the site, balance, cut, and fill by shifting a portion of high ground to the low, then step the building into the rising grade from Spotswood to the medical parking. So this is a section through the site from Spotswood, where you see the car to the right, to the medical offices to the left, and there is a general rise, and so the buildings are being stepped into that rise. On the uphill side, there are two stories, on the downhill side, three. And, and we're, we're positioning the buildings as far back from Spotswood as possible to main, maintain the street's appealing parkway character while still allowing well-proportioned terrace-level garden spaces between the two- to three-story residential buildings. The buildings are additionally positioned as far as possible from neighboring Houston Street Homes and the Pierwana Building to allow for a very generous landscape buffer. So we'll, we'll be illustrating this with these 3D models, which I think is really critical to, to understand this space in terms of its scale and how it fits with the grain of the neighborhood by, by seeing it three-dimensionally. The buildings are just ghosted, they're, they're, as Mr. Gaskin's scheme, you know, still to be designed, but they're, they're accurate in terms of the, the height and scale. The building layout is intentionally very simple for emphasis on natural landscape features. The homes will enjoy views both across Spotswood to Oak Grove Cemetery and of the proposed garden courts. A biofiltration basin at the lowest elevations will fulfill and likely exceed stormwater requirements. So the, the, the plan shows the, the stormwater. The, this, the top view is showing the garden courts, which are terrace-level, and the, the bottom view is looking south on Spotswood, and you see the amount of green there that will maintain that parkway character. The, the bottom illustration shows you how we've got the gently sloping grade where we're accommodating parking, but then there's a low retaining wall. It's, 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 there are no steps on the left side, on the uphill side, but as the grade slopes down, we would have just three steps to rise up to that perfectly leveled So we should now start talking about the general character of the buildings that we might.
Where's my button to push?
Yeah. What you do is you push this one and you point it at the, at the screens.
So these are just some images, of which we have hundreds, because as designers, we refer to other architects and designers' work in order to inform our own. Don't get too attached to any of those because they aren't going to represent exactly what you're gonna see. We can't show you what our project will look like because we don't know yet. We haven't designed it. But we can share with you some of our design processes. So in 27 B.C., an architect named Vitruvius wrote a treatise on architecture, and in it he stated that the measure of success of a design is three things, firmitas, utilitas, and venustas. Those are Italian words which mean firmness, commodity, delight. Those three are the mantra of any architect who was classically trained as I was. So I've taken those concepts and translated them into more modern language. For me, the measure of success of a design is in durability, comfort, and beauty. So those will be the tenets of design that this design team will follow. And those three elements lie underneath the umbrella of sustainability. And I mean that sustainability in a very broad sense, much more than recycling or green building materials, but sustainability in terms of how does this project that we are proposing weave itself into the fabric of Lexington? So we pay attention not only to the built form, but to the spaces between the buildings, as Arthur has just illustrated. We pay attention to the spaces between our built form and the built forms that are currently there. How do we create those transitional spaces so that we are weaving this into the fabric and charm of Lexington? Because Lexington is a charming place, and this should be a charming project. The other thing that we look at is, and let me see if I can get this, this is sort of an illustration of how these spaces would feel in between the buildings. We don't know if we're going to have steps or screened porches or porches, all of those things will come out of the design process. But what we do know is that we want to do more than simply place a building on a piece of land and add the requisite parking. We want to create a community, and a community that's connected, both within itself and without itself. So when we look at durability, comfort, beauty, how do we achieve those goals? Well, we don't have answers yet, but we have lots of questions. Durability is gonna be expressed in, in the materials and methods of construction that we choose for this project. Comfort is probably one of the most important, the comfort for the dwellers. So we look at thermal comfort, acoustical comfort is probably most important in a multifamily building, natural light, cross ventilation. What is the experience of when you come home from work and you get out of your car and you're walking to your front door? What is that experience? You're gonna walk through a beautiful court, into a breezeway, and then to your front entry. What is your experience when you get up on Sunday morning and you want to walk to town to get a cup of coffee? You know, how is it going to feel to live there? My personal perspective is that our dwellings are sacred, and I don't care if it's a tiny house or a McMansion, or if it's rented, or if it's owned. Our dwellings are our private sanctuaries, and this kind of project deserves that kind of attention, to conceive of it that way. So when it comes to beauty, how do we discuss that? That's sort of elusive. But one of the things that we want to do is look at local vernacular. So I was wandering around Lexington looking for some inspiration, and this has always been one of my favorite buildings. This is the Kai Sai House at the corner of Lee and Nelson. And it occurred to me that this building is about the same footprint and about the same mass as the buildings that we are proposing. Ours will be terraced up the hill. Now imagine, if you will, there aren't chimneys on it, and imagine, if you will, that big portico is not there, but this entryway could be the entrance into the breezeway from which the stairwell would reside and access to the apartments would occur. And so this is the kind of thing that we look at. Not that we want to replicate this, we're not interested in design through mindless mimesis, but as inspiration for what we might develop on the Spotswood site. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Max.
Thank you, Heidi. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much again for your time. I'm sorry this is running a little bit, probably later than we most expected, but nevertheless, here we are. One important aspect of our proposal that we feel like we need to point out as well is the ownership structure that we're proposing for this particular development. I understand that a lack of cohesive ownership may be viewed by some as a detriment. We, on the other hand, actually see it as a benefit to the community as a whole. What we're proposing is residential stock that is liquid in ownership. It can be easily transferred from owner to owner, whether it's an investor who chooses to rent a few units as part of their rental portfolio, or it's a retiree who wants to live in a community with amenities and no landscaping within walking distance to downtown. We offer that opportunity with this project. We, we feel like that is a key to homeownership, that is, we feel an important part of any citizenry, citizenship, and we really feel that it presents an opportunity to meet that housing stock within the city with a reasonably affordable multifamily development like this one. Another aspect to, not to miss is of course, community creation. What will make this project special? What is, is making this project different? And this is the neighbors that you're gonna live with, long-term neighbors that are gonna live next to you, who are gonna enjoy those doggy walks in the morning, in the, in the parks surrounding the buildings, those people who are gonna actually benefit from EV charging stations that are part of our proposal as well, and overall cohesive, balanced design. So we feel like the economics of this project will stay within Lexington city limits as well, because we, we would be employing our local talent to produce a project that we personally are all professionally invested in and will have to be judged by for generations to come. So I think it's also an important part to mention as well. Now, the aspect of management, okay? One of the points has been made that apparently a lack of cohesive ownership may present management issues. A lot of those typical challenges would be handled through homeowners association, like any other multifamily project that you would come across, whether it's townhomes, whether it's a planned community like Weatherburn, whether it's a condo community like Spotswood Green. There is a board that governs the common areas, the rights bylaws, and administers how those rules are enforced within those limits. And of course, I'm sure a lot of you are concerned with determining which had, which project has a higher value. Historically speaking, owner-occupied properties that are liquid on the real estate market are assessed at much higher tax values, okay? So, and that is again, another benefit of this liquid ownership that we put at the table. So I think at this point, I think we would like to proceed.
The closing comments, before we get to your questions, which we really look forward to that discussion, is covered, I just wanted to point out in your packet, that we have updated the data that's points one through 14 in your packet to try to reflect this higher condominium count that we think we can support with our site plan. So going forward in our conversations, that's the context, and I invite you to take a look at all those, and they're, they're there for your, your questioning, your understanding. The last, oh yeah, a couple of things that we didn't cover on this target market sectors, you know, we keep asking, well, who's your market? Well, a couple of other things I just wanted to highlight, downsizing is happening significantly within our community, and this, this is why we think there will be buyers coming out of the larger homes in the community and buying into this situation, which will free up a lot of other housing stock. It's also an opportunity for first-home buyers. We're at the prices that we're detailing or targeting in our proposal, I hope that this has the ability for some families to be the first way in to owning their first home and providing that kind of personalities into, into this community. And then also, we also have, we're quite aware that we have a lot of fit olders, myself being one of them, a prime candidate for this, and hope to have in the upper-left building there on the top floor, looking up at Jump Mountain, would be what I'm working toward in this particular project. I just would make those two points, invite you to look at the materials, and entertain your questions. I, I'll make one last comment, and, and that is, this is a neighborhood, you know, it's 60 or 56 units, this is a significant number of, of folks. We don't think it's a traffic implications or untenable. We don't think that we're tipping, there's a tipping point, and I think we, both developers have indicated that, that the range of the, the scale of this thing should work out well for the community. I would be happy to try within the team, I'll answer best your questions as, as you might bring them forward.
Thank you, Lee, and collaborative team. Would welcome questions from council, and as we get ready to pose those, I would say, pose these specifically to the collaborative, and then questions that we have from the community, Jim, any that haven't been addressed, or we may raise and give both developers an opportunity to respond to. So members of council have questions. Dennis?
Yeah. This might be a question for Ms. Schweitzer, I'm not certain, but I'm trying to think of a, a development in, in our community that's kind of similar in scope, not necessarily the design or anything, but I was thinking of Pike's Place, and I'm just curious if you are aware of the, the, the owner versus renter view there? What does that look like?
And Heidi, if you could step up to the microphone, we're recording this for folks that may want to listen to it later. Thank you.
Yes, when we, when I first set out to build Pike's Place, I went to the Realtors and I said, what's your number one demand for housing? And they said, give me something for under $100,000 that's not a trailer. So I commenced on that project, which was an eight-acre hayfield. We did all of the design, infrastructure, engineering, I designed all the units, built them, and they got gobbled up by investors. And that showed me that the need for rental housing was much larger than the And that showed me that the need for rental housing was much larger than the need for that kind of independent ownership of housing. I still live in Pike's Place. I live in one of the one-story units. We have 67 units. I would say at this point, over half of them, maybe about 50%, are still investment-owned. A lot of them have been purchased, a lot of them have turned over over the past decade. But I would say right now, we're about 50% owner-occupied and 50% investment. And it has lent itself to a very stable neighborhood. I love living there, love my community, my neighbors. It's really been a terrific place to live.
Mr. Ziegler.
So, as I understand it, this project would be built, it would be an RLC zone, I mean, the zoning. So, that would mean that an investor would not just rent it on a 12-month lease, but a renter, they could Airbnb it 365 days a year, right?
That would be entirely subject to the homeowners' agreement. So, there would be a structure, a homeowners' association, that would write the rules for those things. Yeah, we would be in control of that.
And the specific guidance we heard from Mr. Gaskin, I think, would be very similar in terms of...
Yeah.
Okay. And the outline of the logic of that, I think, would be very similar to what Mr. Gaskin suggested.
Mr. Trowland.
Thanks for coming. Question I have is timetable. Mr. Gaskin's saying question for him. What's the projected completion date, 100%? And part two is, when would be the first occupants?
Forty-eight months is what we have in our proposal for the due diligence, the design period, the infrastructure construction, and about two years to build out the four buildings. Similar to Mr. Gaskin's ambitions, I think if we can build them faster than in two years, we will. They, we haven't, there's two permutations that we've thought about so far on the sequencing of it, but until we've really done the engineering, I'm not sure how that would phase, but there's certainly a chance for a 50% of the project being completed in the first year as opposed to the two years and getting some people living there.
Thanks.
Ms. Strawn.
Is this your first partnership as a developer, a design-build team?
Yes.
And have some of y'all worked together before?
A lot of us have worked together individually on other projects, but this is the first time in the whole assembly. And basically, it was begun by looking at the prospects of what was being offered two years ago, when the prospect was to tear down the Piovano Building. And we said, well, we need to demonstrate better planning than that option, and that's where this was derived.
Mr. Ziegler.
So, with 56 units, that would be 56 separate water bills, internet bills, right? Every single person would have their own heat pump, I mean, hot water, I mean, it would just...
Yep.
Okay. Just to clarify, so I ask the same questions to each proposal.
If you could speak a little bit, question previously about amenities that would be associated with the neighborhood.
Associated with the neighborhood?
Associated with your project.
Okay. One is, we're considering now a line of carport along the bank at the medical building and doing PV array there for charging stations. If that proves to be untenable for whatever reason, the roofs of these buildings are perfectly situated for PV, so we will do charging stations, bike racks. We're talking about mostly as much permeable paving as proves effective, cost-effective. We have price considerations here. We're not trying to build luxury housing. So, we have to be careful in terms of that, and that's one of the reasons why we went to the 56 units, is clearly we can spread the infrastructure and amenities package out over that many more units, 16% increase, and should help us keep the price down for being able to make use of that density. The courtyards themselves are a real common amenity for kids to, I mean, I think the HOA would say, don't use it as a dog park. We have a lot of periphery. There's footpaths implicit in that. But the courtyards is a big amenity, balconies and cross ventilation in these units. The amount of daylighting that that perimeter allows compared to a more monolithic design is significant. So, the quality of life within a unit is likely to be somewhat higher for having that opportunity for light and ventilation over a lot more of the floor plans. The bioretention, we did put in our, I will mention, we put in our proposal that we would like to participate with the city in a charrette for the improvement package over time, kind of a micro thing of the Spotswood Parkway, that we know that there's a lot of opportunity for the neighbors on the piece of Taylor Street, their backyards, which base up, I think with some opportunities to see some creative ways they could handle it. The Piovano Building has some opportunities. Certainly, the hospital is a partner in that, and there's a few more residences, but there's a whole, this is a great opportunity to do traffic calming, crosswalk locations, try and keep the speeds down on the street, which we know has largely been an enforcement issue so far. We all know the road was designed for about a 45 mile an hour speed limit. Other amenities essentially is high-density tree, both low-canopy trees and shade trees are implicit in the landscaping package. And our sidewalks will interconnect. We've talked about, but have not contacted, the medical offices building. We would like to put a staircase down so that that back part of the neighborhood can circulate easily into this, and that this, the sidewalks going down towards the cemetery entrance will be a dominant pedestrian line into town. So, we see it as a real linkage within the neighborhood. And perhaps the biggest one is by pulling the buildings, A, bifurcating the parking so that it's not a dominant thing, it's tucked away here and there, and providing some big landscape buffer areas, well-planted, to the Houston Street property, the Piovano Building. We've had encouraging remarks from the Piovano Buildings Board about a secondary emergency entrance there, as is shown on the site plan. Wouldn't be free for traffic, could conflict with their program. Am I missing any other amenities?
Of course, if I may add, another big aspect, of course, is going to be the homeowners' association, because ultimately, those decisions can't be made by the residents themselves. If there is a need for an additional amenity, then the homeowners' association would really be responsible for creation of it and maintenance and so forth, but it creates a flexible model where the needs of the community can't be addressed by the community without putting the burden on one particular owner or on the city itself. So, that's really one of the biggest contributions of this model as well.
Leslie.
Lee, Mr. Gaskin mentioned it in his presentation, so that's why I did not ask him this question. But do you believe that the way the development is designed, it'll fit within our zoning as is, or is there some areas that setbacks don't quite meet our regulations or anything?
Having watched really closely the development of the PUD and the Plan Commission and the changes to these things, I think we, I would agree that this can be built within the current zoning ordinance, with some small exceptions maybe necessary. When we get into design, we might want to add two feet on a building when the corner, this far corner. Concerns is right here, but we can make the setbacks, the density, the parking requirement is, as we agree, seems to be our interpretation. We have not had the chance to work this through with staff to the level that the Gaskin has. We're looking to see if, we don't anticipate it being much different than going through with the echelon proposal.
Thank you. And out of curiosity, I'm not really judging it on this, but do you know, is that, you're talking about leveling that whole area, is that fill dirt that's on there, or that's just the topography and you're planning to do some...
The old photograph indicates that parts of that are the natural grades. I don't know. When the excavation for the Piovano Building was made, it looks to me like some of that went up onto that bank, and that that is fill. But that, in the main, it's fairly close to its natural contours, as it's been a field. And Russ, you know, we really look forward to working with Russ Orson on this, because he's the, he knows his stuff, he knows how to contribute to this team. He hasn't so far been highly involved in these conceptual things, but I'm sure he's going to be thrilled to see the grading plan that Arthur's firm has provided us.
Mr. Ziegler. Got another question or a couple, and they'll just be very, it'll be very general, kind of what I throw at you, and then I'll ask Mr. Gaskin also, just if he, later. But just during the construction process, even though we might be focused on the end product, which right for Lexington, but sometimes the construction process and how it interacts with the neighbors or the community can really influence long-term perception of a project. We've seen that here in Lexington with certain construction projects. Do you have experience, or will you be considerate of the neighbors not starting construction before a certain time of day, working on Saturdays and Sundays? I'm just, and then the concept of funerals being right across the street. I know you can't stop what you're doing, but just, is that something that's on your, just something on your mind that you're building in a community and you want to be a good neighbor, you want to get deliveries at the right time? And I just bring that up now, not going to hold you to the answers, but just, you know, I think Max building in Weatherburn, he is building literally next to some people, and probably each of you have experienced doing projects right next to where people are waking up. And so, I just want an assurance that you'll be good neighbors during that process of construction.
Certainly is consistent with our goal set and the people that are on the team, so I don't anticipate that we wouldn't be as sensitive as can be.
And I think for both Max and myself, that has been...
Heidi. Thank you.
Hope I'm speaking for you. In the projects that I've been involved in, you know, Penrith, a 32-unit, single-family development over by Central Elementary School, Pike's Place, had less concern with neighbors because we were kind of in a wide-open area there. But yes, we're very cognizant of the fact that even when we build as infill housing in a neighborhood, it's shocking to the neighbors. And keeping a good rapport with them and developing those relationships to make sure they know, come to us if there's an issue with us or with anybody on the job site, and being really responsible neighbors is very high on my priority list.
Right, same here. I think we all have a very extensive experience working within very tight spaces, okay? And it does bring its own challenges from the production standpoint. However, it's also an opportunity to promote that community feel, that the builder is part of the community. And I'm like, or we are not, like anyone else, care more about making sure that people remain satisfied, if not happy, within the space where we are working on a daily basis. So, I'm sure I'll speak for everybody that we are very much open for feedback. We're very visible community members. We're not hard to track down. So, if there is an issue, our cellphones are readily available to a lot of people, let us know. We're here to serve the community, and that's why we want to be part of this project as well. Thank you.
You did say there were going to be 56 units. Did you say what the breakdown, you think, I know you haven't done the full design, but...
Two fractions have been running around in the design team. One is 50/50, 50% two-bedroom and 50% not-two-bedroom, i.e., one-bedroom studios or efficiencies. That gave us, that gives us this comfortable margin on the 1.5 parking. There has been conversation that perhaps the 70/30 split in the Gaskin proposal, I think when, there's a housing study beginning at, by the county and the city that should be useful in the next year in terms of the insights that come from that. And we have a lot of Realtors to talk to, but I would say it's in that range. That two-stores, the two-bedroom unit count, we'll put it as high as we think is marketable for the project. There's clearly a lot of demand for smaller units.
Right, and I assume you've looked at the Danter study, because it does delve into that and shows just what you said, that there is a need for one-bedroom units in our area.
All right. Other questions from council. Ms. Trowland.
Just have an observation. It's not been mentioned tonight, but it was mentioned during the last discussions about the development of Spotswood, and one of the Lexington residents had talked about the fun event of the helicopters at 2:00 a.m. and about the potential for whatever can happen with that. And I had looked at some guidelines, the development guidelines, and other areas where noise is a problem, and like the noise standard would be for the interior noise levels in the construction. But your project is no different than any other house in that immediate area, but still something to consider. Don't know how much of a consideration it is, but just wanted to put it on the table since it's been mentioned in the past.
I appreciate the concern, because it'll come when we get to scaling our fenestrations, the windows. Glass is, of course, the place where we get the most sound penetration, and we're trying to make some very ambitious thermal comfort standards and low-energy bills for these folks. These are sustainable units. We want to find the balance, a sweet balance point between as much natural daylight as is needed and a pleasant environment with plenty of cross-ventilation opportunities for the six months out of the year, that we hope people will be able to exercise that option.
Yeah, I came across, just to fill in another detail, I came across, and there's some information done by an engineering firm having to deal with the construction next to the Dulles Road up in Fairfax, Fairfax County, up there at Northern, whatnot, where the standard was, the interior noise measure of the house had to meet a standard, not the outside, because of the noise.
Certainly lots of noise coming off of Dulles. Perhaps the last question for you as an individual presenter, and then we'll get to general questions for everyone. Mr. Gaskin's indicated that the rental rates for his project, but I don't know that I've heard what you all anticipate as far as the costs, and it's still conceptual, but...
We bracketed it at the low 200s and the high 200s for sales price.
Okay.
You can transfer that through to a rental, but for a sales price, that's our target going into the design.
Low twos to high twos.
Right.
Very good, thank you. At this point, as the city manager to pose questions for both developers to be able to respond to, and these are questions that were received from members of the public as well as some questions from staff. Turn your mic over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I would ask that individuals from both teams come up, that way you can just take these questions one by one, from the public, that is, that's what I'm starting with. And I will say that I'm going to read them exactly as they provide these questions, and some are actually more in the form of comments, so there may not be a need to respond to that. Several of them have to do with what council's impressions are of the project, so I would, you know, obviously like city council or somebody on council to make a statement about those particular questions or comments, please. So, I'll just get started. Mr. Gaskin, you're stepping forward. Is there somebody from the collaborative going to step forward as well? Because I want to ask you these questions simultaneously. So, there'll be a question from the public...
Not very hard.
And you'll each answer those. Okay. This first one is from Mr. Leon Joe Henning, and he says, please try and get my questions below into the agenda when city council and the Spotswood developers meet to consider citizen input on the Spotswood development. One, the hospital has a 24-hour emergency helicopter on duty to pick up and deliver patients to healthcare facilities. This helicopter flies directly over the 3.2 acres planned for development. A, don't the members of the city council and the prospective developers consider this loud disturbance to be a significant distraction for the people that would rent these apartments and discourage them from renting them if built? So, I'll first ask the developers, Mr. Gaskin, would you want to respond to that? It's similar to a question we've heard already. However, this came from the public. We want to honor the fact that they've asked these questions to have specific answers to suit them. So, please, Mr. Gaskin.
We don't view the helicopter traffic as a detriment. It's a part of a characteristic of a neighborhood and the adjacent employer. It is what it is. We've developed properties in bucolic, quiet zones and other ones...
in bucolic, quiet zones and other ones next to very busy freight rail lines. All of them have been successful. There's, there's a certain context of neighborhood noise that people get accustomed to, and becomes part of the endearing attributes of where you live.
Mr. Merrill?
I would just add to it the observation that someone who has the sensitivity to be concerned about it probably won't buy or rent there.
Very good, I appreciate that. City council, there was the implication that there needed to be awareness of that similar question on the council's part. Any comments? So Mr. Joe Henning would be assured that we understand his concern and implications that may or may not be present. Anybody?
I think we're all very well aware, and would make the observation, if you need the services of the helicopter, you're pretty close by, and it would be convenient. So I think council's well aware.
Okay, thank you. B, isn't this disruptive occurrence guaranteed to reduce the property value of this development? Mr. Merrill?
Which properties would have their proper assessment?
Isn't this disruptive occurrence, meaning the helicopters, guaranteed to reduce the property value of this development? So how does the noise impact the value of your project?
Some minimal diminished, minimally diminished. I mean, sure, it would be better if the helicopter noise wasn't there, but I think city council made that judgment when they decided on the policy to let the hospital have a helicopter there. Everybody's annoyed for the moment it happens, and they don't just fly over this land, this property, they fly over the entire town. And it's, it's not random, but, but I think they're probably sensitive and try and move their flight patterns around, because they're not, they're not hitting everybody, I mean, they're not concentrating their flight pattern.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin?
Nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you. C, this question should be presented during every meeting that addresses Spotswood Development to ensure that all council members and developers have an opportunity to address this responses, as probably not all concerned will be in a single meeting at one time. That's obviously a statement. I don't know that, since all parties really are here today, that we have to repeat this at every meeting as Mr. Joe Henning asked. But if there's anybody who would like to make a statement that's his concern, again, I think probably we've dealt with it thoroughly tonight.
I'll just make the observation, I'll speak to Mr. Joe Henning personally and affirm for him that we are all here and all well aware of the helicopter and its, the significance and impact that it has on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both. I have one other set of questions from Jennifer Jarvis, and she's located on Taylor Street. She said, "I am writing to make sure I understand correctly what is going on up to this point. U.S. city council have decided to only look at the two proposals for Spotswood that includes apartments and not look at the houses or townhouses." Correct. I guess that's pretty self-evident, city council, that is correct where we stand today. If my memory serves me well, Echelon will own the property, have someone who works there most of the time, and will only rent out the apartments and not sell them, they will manage the property. I think you've already answered that, Mr. Gaskin?
I did, and I actually personally spoke with Ms. Jarvis yesterday. We had a great conversation, and basically I repeated what we talked about today in my presentation.
Thank you. And this was addressed only to Mr. Gaskin, so it wasn't addressed to you. "I'm not sure if I know if Max Mark Homes will be selling the apartment units, and I'm not sure if they will have a property manager onsite or on call. Can you please find this information out, please?" You've touched on some of this, would you like to...
I don't think that there would be an onsite manager. The HOA would be responsible.
Right, I think to address those concerns, we've got to remember that the ownership structure is completely different from a competitive proposal. So what we would provide a homeowners' association presence at the property that manages any and all business of that community as a whole, where the residents are directly involved through a typical democratic process, to voice their concerns and opinion in the board, to take, to take action upon them. So as far as each individual units that may enter the rental housing stock, most likely that would, that would be the decision to, up to their owners who's going to manage them, whether it's going to be owner-managed or a third-party professional management company managed.
How many units would there be?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six units, okay. So fifty-six different owners?
If we find out that 52 works, or architects are better, we'll be coming for 52, but we're, we're confident we can get well above the 48, and, and we're trying to get the house price to be what it is.
For Ms. Jarvis's purposes, she would have 56 neighbors with a common set of rules, but if she had a concern with the property, it would be the HOA or one or some of 56 owners. Thank you.
And can I just get a clarification? So on the HOA, there will be, and I think, Max, you've done this with your other properties, having a HOA, is there a monthly fee to, to do the work that needs to be done by the HOA?
Well, I, I'm a member on multiple HOAs, both residential's, high-density HOAs and so forth, and it's really up to the community to decide the level of services that they want and the amount of money they're willing to pay on a monthly basis to address the needs of the community. So for example, in Weatherburn, it's a completely one type of structure. At the pinnacle, it's something different, because it does not include so common area maintenance and so forth. You know, at the country club, there is an HOA, and they pay dues, but they're very small, because there's virtually no common area to maintain. So that is yet to be determined through the homeowners' association process, which tends to be the most nimble and most responsive to the needs of the community as a whole.
Presumably, an HOA would be in charge of maintaining the exterior of the building, the parking lot, any common areas?
Everything, yeah, probably common area maintenance is, you know, all the common area hallways and so forth, so how you would find it in a typical condominium project.
And then HOA is, is made up of members of, who live there, owners, sorry, owners who live there, and they can choose whether or not to hire a management company to take care of some of those...
Certainly, yes, absolutely.
Maintenance, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
And just a point of clarification, it's not the homeowners that live there, it's the owners of the 56 units. They may live anywhere in the world, if they're investors or the folks that are living there. Thank you for those questions.
Next question, and these came from staff, including myself, and Mr. Gaskin, maybe you can start and share with us any experience you have had relocating underground utilities, if those will need to be located on the site, relocated, I should say.
The most recent example is our Suffolk project. We had extensive utility relocation and new utility installation. It was roughly a quarter of a mile of public water and public sewer that had to be installed, not including the private lines, quite an extensive project. Culpeper, we did significant utility relocation. Anyway, those two examples, but, but we're comfortable with it, nobody likes to do it, but we all need the water to come in and the waste to go out, so that's an important part.
Your question. Mr. Merrill, any experience or...
I agree, it's not rocket science. You put in the new line where you will have it, and then you take out of service the old line. We have engineering expertise, but they're not here tonight.
Okay, very good, thank you both. Okay. While you're there, Mr. Merrill, why don't you start out with this question? "And should it be necessary, even though we hope it is not, in what fashion can you contribute to resolving any concerns due to traffic increase on Spotswood Street at the intersection with Nelson Street?"
I think we'd be happy to present our design ideas and to participate in seeing what thoughtful design changes might be made at the intersection, having watched VDOT operate around here and make decisions. I think the last time VDOT was involved in their planning, they suggested that we not allow cars to get on Nelson Street from Walker Street, but come all the way down to Spotswood and into town. So I mean, that's a much scarier prospect of, of how such a problem could arise than the seven and a half per minute kind of load that either of these projects would be putting on that. So I don't anticipate it changing other than at, you know, at peak hours, but it's nothing compared to the prospects for the one-way now Washington Street and the problems that that might occur. Col alto owns the property there, I mean, the hotel ownership, that is pretty limited in terms of the right of way. I don't think it's, we're not going to, it's not going to reach a tipping point from these, either of these projects.
Thank you. Mr. Gaskin, response?
I would agree. I mean, the scale of both of these proposals is de minimis in terms of traffic count. I believe in one of the responses, we estimated based on ITE data sets for mid-rise buildings, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it would be interesting to look to respond to this question, the current VDOT intersection data for that intersection, and see if it's close by their own documentation to failure as they define it. If it's not, then there's really nothing that either proposal is going to do to tip it, because the residential impact of this in terms of traffic counts per day is small.
Thank you both, I appreciate that. Mr. Gaskin, while you're there, we'll just shift right to you, I'm sorry, don't leave that podium once I'm going here. You touched on this to great extent, but I'm going to read the question and give you an opportunity if you want to respond or add anything. "Please tell us about your current relationships with the various contractors and subcontractors you have worked with in the past on projects of this magnitude, and how you intend to assure you have these specialized contractors available when you start work here."
That is, that is the question of the day for anybody engaged in construction, finding the right talent at the right time for this job. I, I can only speak to our experience in that we make it work. Construction is inherently a managed chaos process. It's inherently disruptive. It's about bringing a lot of materials and labor at the right time at different points in a critical path process. It's not enjoyable, speaking from a personal perspective, but it's a necessary part. We have a great record of sticking the landing in terms of schedule and budget, and anybody that works in construction knows that frankly, that's no easy feat. We have a large network of suppliers and subcontractors, as I mentioned before. We haven't begun the thought process to figure out who would be the right fit here, but frankly, a lot of pressure is placed on those key team members. We expect a lot out of them, we pay them well, we're exigent in what we require from them and how we manage that process. At the end of the day, the buck stops with us. Thank you, Mr. Gaskin.
Mr. Merrill, I see you're nodding to Mr. Ivankov, so...
Just prefaces remark that it's knowing who the local contracting community is and having work and working relationships with them already is certainly helpful. We do understand this is a challenging time, but I'll let Max.
I can take the next 15 minutes to talk about labor availability in Lexington, Virginia, but I think you all were very well aware of the challenges that we have in the service and construction industry, specifically in, in our area. But through the years, I hope I have shown my capabilities and of turning some number of neighborhoods around and trying to find the right fit for the right type of product to deliver quality in the end that people can be proud of. So that is sort of our business card that I always bring with me to any meeting, and I hope that satisfies that, that question.
Thank you both. Mr. Merrill, since you're standing there, you can reach out to anybody, of course, but on your team, that is. "Please detail the steps you would take to assure that you have financing in place for this development. Can you share who you may have used to finance your work in the past?"
Max is really having negotiations with the bank.
Right. Well, being in the construction industry, I'm sure you all understand it's an extremely capital-intensive proposition. And we have jointly relationships with commercial banks, as well as private investors, that will play, play quite a significant role in this development project as well. So part of the attachment to our cover letter is an opinion of one of the local banks that we work very, very much with, and we hopefully to, we hope to bring one of the local banking components to this project as well. Again, the, the goal is, is that the economics of this project stays in this city. It's not a general contractor coming from somewhere else, busing workers over here in the middle of the week, trying to get things done. This is local resources pulling together to produce a project that we all can be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Gaskin, do you have a response for that? You did touch on some of this in your presentation, I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Capital, like subcontractors, is about the right tool for the task. We work with a variety of lenders, as big as, currently have loans with as big as Truist, to as small as Virginia Community Capital, Virginia Credit Union. We've worked a lot with Atlantic in their prior iterations as well. So it, it's, we have not started any discussions with local banks, that's certainly an option. It's about finding the right capital for the task, and so it's too early to do that at this point. One has to put together a business model based on the zoning that's allowed to, to get a shot at that conversation.
Thank you, stay there. Keep it efficient. And again, I think both of you touched on this a little bit, but I want to ask again with a little, just more detail. Please share with us the structure of your development team, their roles, the length of time you've worked together, and the projects you've undertaken together. Will this team be in place on the Spotswood development?
Well, you're looking at half of it. I've been working in this sector for about 18 years. The partner that's also involved, Mr. Cosby, who's been interacting on several occasions with staff and city council, I've been working with him about six years.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill?
Want to restate the question?
"Please share with us the structure of your development team, their roles, the length of time you've worked together, and the projects you've undertaken together. Will this team be in place on the Spotswood development?"
This is the first task we've undertaken together as a team. We have created a legal LLC for the collaborative, and it, the presumption is that it will morph into the development entity as opposed to Mark, Max Mark, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if city council wants to ask a few more general questions. Our planning director, Arnie Glazer, is here as well. If you wanted to ask any questions of him that are pertinent, not suggesting you must, but...
We have a longstanding policy, I would say, of listening and asking and acting, not in haste. So other questions that council members have? Mr. Ziegler?
Can I just ask the same question to Mr. Gaskin about being respectful of your neighbors, working in tight spaces, acknowledging that there's a cemetery across the street? You heard the question before.
It is difficult. Construction is disruptive, noisy, no, no way around it. But, you know, again, Class A contractor with a lot of experience, we fence sites, we develop operating hour protocols, particularly in tight proximity situations like this. We respect weekends as we are able to engage with event centers around us, like a cemetery would be. Of course, we try to be respectful. You know, thinking of a couple of small examples, in Chatham, literally next door to the facility was a concert pianist that did recordings. We got to know each other pretty well, and we learned to alter our site work schedule to her recording schedule, and we ended up being great friends. She actually had put her, her father living with us. In Halifax, when we redeveloped there, the town manager literally lives across the street, and I still remember one very, very atypically windy day, I saw his number pop up on my phone, I knew exactly what he was going to call me about. You know, clearly we had some trash blowing around, we sent a team over to address it. You know, they, just like the other team had said, my number will be known to the people that are involved and around the site, and I expect to be called when there are issues that we can solve, or issues that I just need to apologize for. And that happens, you know, a lot. So that's construction.
Other questions that council has? We have a small contingency from the public. I don't know if you all have any brief questions you'd like, or that haven't been asked that you'd like to hear responded to. Mary Ellen, I'll ask you to step up to the mic so folks can hear. And I will acknowledge this is a point of personal privilege. With our work sessions, we usually don't hear from the public, but thank you for being here.
I'm surprised you asked, I'm Mary Ellen Cook, I'm surprised you asked me to speak. If you hadn't, I wouldn't.
Fair enough. Just looking for questions that we should be considering.
On the collaborative sketch, I, I looked at it, and I could see parking spaces up on the backside of the four buildings, but I couldn't imagine how the cars from Spotswood drive, would access those parking spaces. It didn't look clear to me from the sketch.
There's a lane that runs between the two pairs of buildings that is also parking, and that's how you access the parking in the back.
And another question that's... And another question that's near and dear to my heart because I have a background in drawing maps to suit landscapes, and I know that on that particular tract of land, let's call it the two buildings next to the Piovani building, is on a nice convex slope. And the two buildings, I guess, more south of there is clearly in what we call a swell. And I have been on site where subdivisions have gone in, in the swell. And although it looks perfectly dry, most of the time there are intermittent downpours of rain that have actually flooded the, let's just say, the basement of home sites there. I see a pond site closer to the road, but I don't know how water naturally flowing across that southern section of the lot would find its way to that sedimentation pond closer to the road.
Mary Ellen, your question is very good. I would tell you that we are not quite there yet. Our ambition tonight is to find a partner to then contend with that type of question and issue. So it won't be a perfect site to build on, but a great one and a great addition to our community. Any other members of public have any questions? Fantastic. Arnie? Fair enough. Any closing comments from the developers? Not necessary, but if there's anything you want to say before we close our meeting? Fair enough. Members of council, Leslie?
I'll say thank you to both groups. It definitely will be a better project because more people are involved and bouncing off ideas. It already is a better project than a year ago, like was pointed out. And so I really do appreciate all the comments we've gotten from the public and for both proposals from both groups. So thank you.
Coming from our liaison to the planning commission, who gets to hear all the projects first, and I know she speaks for all of council in saying thank you. Through this process, and it is a process, we look to be very transparent. We have taken our time to listen to the community, to respond to ideas and opportunities that we hadn't thought about. And I hope that people understand that this council, with their professionalism and commitment to our, to our citizens and to our city, will make a great decision. One developer won't be happy with the decision, and that's unfortunate outcome of the work ahead of us. But from a process standpoint, we anticipate additional dialogue between developers and city staff, and that staff will be bringing forward a recommendation, I believe, April 7th for council's consideration to make a decision on who to partner with. Of course, a public hearing. There'll be opportunities for the general public to speak and advocate or lobby in the grocery store or on the streets or wherever. But we're exceedingly grateful to all of you for the time, and we respect your time and energy that goes into these projects. Lee, if you can step.
March 14th session?
March 17th will be our next council meeting.
Okay, but there is, the public hearing that you will hear the public's reactions on these projects before you make your decision. Will it be presentations by the developers?
Don't anticipate that there'll be additional presentations by the developers, but if council would like to hear or ask some additional questions, we certainly can provide that format. Keep in mind, this will, Spotswood will continue to be an unfinished business item on our agenda for the next few meetings as it is. That makes it available for folks to come during public comment and speak to the issue. Do you have something you wanted to add?
I believe Mr. Merrill is correct. We do have a March 15th session as well, so.
Work session?
Yeah, work session, right.
So March 15th is, is that in our, March 15th working session, all of this?
Yes.
And then the 17th is the, might be the first public hearing?
No, the April 7th would be the public hearing. I mean, clearly if we have comments from the public on March 15th, we wouldn't be ready on the 17th to consider that at the regular meeting, which is why we would then take that up on April 7th for the first public hearing and any recommendation from staff at that point, earliest at that point.
And keep in mind, this is our planned process. If we have additional comment from citizens that make us pause, I can assure you that council will take the time. We don't want to extend this any longer than necessary for your professional purposes. We want to get it right. We only get one chance to select a developer on this property, so.
Thank you.
So the, what you saw, we will be working towards, and that's our goal.
Oh, one thing that segues into that, we would ask that you update the city's website on the current discussion. It's a little hard to find some of the most, there's a lot of material there that could be archived, that pre rah rah and all that stuff. But just wondered if you've, there are places where you can go to find the information, but the Spotswood information site looks to us like there's some things that haven't been posted in a while.
We'll check on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I would also respond, as I have to some others who've raised that issue, we don't want to exclude or not have available any information for anyone who's just now getting to the party to understand why we are where we are. And all of that with the original proposal, Piovano discussion, et cetera, is important fabric for understanding how we're sitting here on March 1st and entertained by two incredibly talented groups for us to consider.
If I may add, I think it's really, so to reiterate that point, I think it's more of a question of format rather than availability of information. So we would like to see maybe a little, the latest information being a little bit more accessible, even if you're just sorting it by date, where the latest news about Spotswood is on top, and then you can chronologically trace exactly how we got there instead of going the backwards way around it. So that was our comment. I think transparency is important. Accumulation of historical information is important, but like everything else, not everybody has the time to kind of figure out what was first, next, second, third. Maybe there is a better way to present that information, so.
Thanks, sir. Members of council have anything else? If not, we will stand adjourned at 7:31. Thank you all for your time and energy. Have a great night.